Okay, good evening, everyone. This is the Rutland Town Planning Commission, and it's June 24th of 2021. Thank you all for attending, and let's start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, which we haven't done in some time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So we've, tonight, we've got Howard Burgess here, Norm Cohen, and myself in the town office. And on Zoom is Andy Vane of Sherman-Hunter, Jerry Sterns, Mary Beth Polley, and Jim Hall. Do I have everyone? I'll take that as an affirmative. Thank you. So the first item for us tonight is the approval of the agenda.
So move.
I'm, I was just going to move to amend it, if I may.
Okay, Howard, okay.
I move to amend the agenda by adding to Old Business Energy Committee update.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Now we're at the part of the agenda where the public can speak to us. And we do have David Cleary here, resident of the town, and you live on McKinley Avenue.
Correct.
And you came tonight, thank you, just to give us a heads up and a little bit about you coming to us a little bit later for some boundary line adjustments, plural, right? Go ahead. If you would go near any of those microphones over there.
Good evening, everyone. My wife and I are new residents on McKinley since last October, November. For the last 30 years, we've been up in Menden, and we sold our place up there and moved to the beautiful town of Rutland. Once there and after the closing, I got to look at the maps, and I noticed that Don Choffey's old lot, which is now owned by Mr. and Mrs. Buttrick's, Kelly and her husband, who I guess is pretty ill and doesn't get out of the house, and I don't know if he gets out of bed. I'm not sure what's wrong with him, but Kelly now owns that lot. And I talked with Don several times to get a feel for why this parcel that the Buttricks now own, which is the, kind of the second one coming up McKinley Avenue on the right, on the north, why it's kind of gerrymandered the way it is. And Don said, well, in those days, what we were trying to do was develop something where I could get around those requirements of Act 250. Turned out, I couldn't, but that's the way the parcel was laid out, and it's been that way ever since. And I said, it looks kind of crazy. He said, why don't you go talk to the Buttricks and buy some and straighten out your lot lines? So about three weeks ago, I went and stopped at Kelly Buttrick's house, Don Choffey's old house, and she came out and greeted me, and I introduced myself. She's a retired Coast Guard dental surgeon or dentist, been in 27 years, I guess. And so I told her what I had in mind, and she said, my Lord, God works in strange ways. And I said, why? She said, last night at supper, my sons, one of whom is heading off to graduate school down at Amherst, said to me, Mom, why don't we go talk to the neighbors and see if they want to buy that old land up there that nobody uses, and we can straighten out the lots, and we can get some money for graduate school? And I said, great idea. So I talked to her about what the plan would be, which is simply to straighten the existing lot lines. And I brought with me three sets of exhibits, and I've marked them A. And A is the existing lot lines as laid out on the tax map. And there's three of those that I deposited at the chairman's site. B is the original survey plan when Don Choffey did the development. And C is a proposed set of lines informally laying out what I talked to the neighbors about in terms of just closing up, straightening out the lot lines, and making some sense out of it. And I've talked with Dr. and Mrs. Simone, and his comment to me was, tell me what it's done and tell me where to send the check. I talked to Kelly, of course, and she said, fine, do whatever you want to do. I talked to Dr. Marsh's ex-wife, Karen Clef, I think she went back to her maiden name, and she said, fine. She, as you can see from Exhibit C, would have the smallest little lot adjustment. And then I talked to my wife, which is most important, and she said, okay. So what we're proposing to do, and I've hired Bob Tinker, a surveyor I've known for some years, but he's so busy, as is everybody else, that it's going to be probably, I talked to him two weeks ago. He said it'd probably be four, five weeks before he can get up there to play with it. And I got copies of the forms from Bill Sweet. And I noted right away that what it says is, tell us the acreage before and the acreage after, which, of course, I can't do until the survey is done. But the plan kind of gives you a very good idea of where the lot lines would go. And basically, what I did, and what I talked to the neighbors about doing, is just running the existing lot lines kind of straight out until we get to the northerly kind of boundary of Don Choffey's old lot, of the Buttrick's lot, where it joins, is Conklin still there? Does he own that property? Nobody's built anything on it.
That's the vacant parcel.
Yeah, vacant parcel, about 10.3 acres.
Yeah, they still own it.
Okay. So everything would just run up to that existing property line of theirs, the common property line between Conklin and now Buttrick's formerly Choffey. So that's what I'm proposing, and it makes infinite sense, because then we have someplace to walk the dog without being on somebody else's property. So that's my proposal, and what I will do after I get the, Bob Tinker to do the survey, is fill out the forms that Bill Sweet sent me so that we can apply for the boundary line adjustment. And it will include the property owners of Kelly Buttrick and her husband, Karen Clef, who was formerly Mrs. Marsh, my wife Valerie and myself, and then Rob, Dr. DeSimone and his wife. The smallest parcel will be picked up by Kristen. I bet that's probably less than an acre. And so that's kind of the plan. That's what we have in mind in it. It certainly would make sense after 25 or 30 years to take that dragon-shaped parcel that means nothing to anybody and put it with the adjoining lots.
Okay.
And I'd be glad to answer any questions that anybody has.
And we didn't have any of these digitally folks that are on Zoom, so sorry, you don't have anything to look at this evening. But this is just preliminary. They've just given us an idea of what he is going to come to us with. So we meet every three weeks.
Okay.
So the next meeting, I believe, is July 15th. I'll double-check that.
Yes, I've got a board here.
Oh, yeah, right. Forgot my way around this room.
I have a couple of questions, if I may.
And then three weeks after that, you know. Go ahead, Norm.
David, my concern, if there is one, is whether or not there's a subdivision here.
Right.
And, um, it may not be. It looks like it's getting close. Dr. Simone's property, on all three of these, I want two of them. Will that, will he now, Dr. Simone, which was, go all the way to the rear line? I see there's, I'm not sure there's a, let me come over and ask you.
Okay. He will go all the way up to where it's 70.2 feet, adjoining the McGlory lot, or the Conklin lot, I mean.
Then come down to the other, to But where you're going to be.
Right.
And then you will get the property that is now Buttrick?
The first parcel of Buttrick's will go with Kristen Marsh Clef, which is where the 204.11 footage is, and then there's that little parcel that falls below what the surveyor marked as 790 feet. So she picks up that little piece, and then Valerie and I would pick up the piece that's got the Merrill name marked in it now.
Wait a minute.
Which is really Buttrick's.
See it, Norm?
I can show you what he's talking about.
Yeah. So we may need permits from each one of the landowners.
Merrill is written right.
Oh, they're going to join in the conveyance, so I think we'll be okay there.
Okay.
Oh, you mean permits for them to apply to the planning commission?
Yeah.
Okay.
And this goes with this.
So that would be four total?
Right. And I think, but I'll take your advice on this, that I could probably do individual form number ones, because form number one in the boundary line adjustment application has information owner from Lot A and Lot B. And what we would be doing is Lot A, B, C, and D. So we'd have four, so I could do a supplemental page and add them in and change them from A and B to C and D.
Yeah, I think that would work.
And then everybody would be on the same page, so to speak, in terms of who's getting what property from whom. And then the surveyor would tell us in narrative and in descriptive map form exactly what he's doing so that we know which parcel is picking up what acreage, and he can tell us.
Okay.
The surveyor is going to do all, all three of these at one, one time.
Correct.
So continue to work with Bill.
Yep.
He will be the contact
Okay.
for the town, and, you know, work through him, and he'll get in touch with us
Okay.
about new progress, you know, when the survey is done and when we should meet next
Great.
on this.
Question's going to be, is it going to be a survey or a subdivision or a boundary line adjustment? We're getting into, I don't know if the acreages are going to become an issue. We're not, this, as you know, a boundary line would be a simple thing, just to move the boundaries.
Right.
But that's something we'll have to work out.
Yeah, I mean, the subdivision's not really based on acreage. It's based on whether they need municipal services, like, you know, adding water or sewer and
And these are all existing lots.
Well, that's always the case, whether it's a boundary adjustment or a subdivision, when the issue comes up. It's always with existing property. You may have to talk to David Swift's office and get deferrals. But I'll leave that up to you.
Okay, why do you think that, Norm?
Well, because you're dividing property. And they may look at it that way, but, you know, it's just a heads up. You have
Okay.
These properties, your property now, you're just going to have one parcel that's going to be just bigger.
That's correct.
You're not going to have two parcels. It's going to be one parcel.
Right. Same with everybody else.
It's going to be one, one parcel, Norm. I mean, if he wanted to do anything, well, he'd have to subdivide it.
I'm sorry.
He'd have to do a subdivision if he wanted to change anything.
But that's the opposite of what you're doing.
Correct.
No.
Any comments from the Zoom audience up there?
I think you've covered everything.
Is there an acreage consideration for the subdivision versus boundary line?
No, it's, it's, there isn't. It's, it's more like how, you know, how many houses or how many lots you're putting in, so that's a kind of determination of minor or major. And if you need to add, you know, access to services, including, you know, access to town roads.
Right.
Hasn't there been some issue about percentage?
We have subdivision.
Norm, Norm, just a minute.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear.
Hasn't there been some issue about the percentage of properties that we're picking up? Something Bill can clear that, of course, but certainly a boundary line would be the simplest way to go if we can, if we can do that.
Yep.
Norm.
Yep. This is all preliminary and just speculation, that we need to just tie up some loose ends. We're not trying to give you a hard time. I'll take a look at the subdivision regulations. You may not be aware that the town has their own, and they're online, and take a look at the definition of subdivision.
Okay.
And we'll try to make it work.
All right, great, Norm.
Yeah. I don't seem to have those with me right now.
Now we see what's
If we find gold or oil, we're going to leave some of it to the town.
Excellent. And you're not in any rush.
No.
Any, you don't have any deadlines, closings, or anything like that, so. So we'll, we'll walk our way through this.
All right, great.
Any other comments? From the commissioners?
Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
And good luck with Zoom. Thanks.
We've been doing Zoom for, you know, for a year. It's just all this new stuff. Which are?
All right, thank you all.
Have a nice evening.
You too.
Okay, yeah, let's all take a look at the sub, our, our subdivision regs and refresh our memories on, on that. So next on the agenda is a letter to the Public Utility Commission in support of Velcos. They call it the North Rutland Substation Project. It's in support of that. I asked the select board if they wanted to do a joint letter, and they do. So that was signed off on Tuesday night. Mary has signed that, so.
As is.
Not as is.
Yeah, I know. I had to, yeah.
Okay.
I found those after. But yes, it does, it is grammatically correct, and the typos are gone now.
This is redundant paragraph?
Yes, yeah, thanks, yeah.
Thank you.
So the issue before us is whether we want to sign on, and if you would give me permission to sign for the group.
Steve, are you re-entering? Just to get my keys.
Yeah. Anyone want to make a motion to? Go ahead with this letter?
So moved.
And I'll second it.
Okay, Sherman. Any discussion? Any questions about it? This is for the full Section 248 application that they're doing, and they're hoping to get that going in early July.
Yeah, I wondered about, apparently, you must have gotten the, the technical information where they talk about, you know, a larger control facility, expand the fencing, replacing a critical circuit switcher. Is that what's all in their Act 250?
It's, it's in there, yeah, Section 248.
That's where that would have come from, yeah.
Yeah.
248, yeah.
Yeah, and, and the, yes, the 45-day notice.
That's basically what their, their goal is here to do. That's, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All those in favor of me signing off on this joint letter, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next is an Act 250 application amendment that the town is putting forth to put in the shared use path that's going from the, the school, the town school, up to Northwood Park. So there, it'll be a new path, so they have to amend the existing Act 250 permit to do that. And so this is pretty much just an FYI, that this is in the works from the town. I'm not sure I can answer too many more questions about it than, than that.
I'm sure everyone's thought, I mean, I'm not the first one to think about this, but is it, is the path so large that it requires an Act 250 permit?
Um, I don't think so. It's just that the existing permit does not have the path included. So to put the path in, the, the permit needs to be amended. Is how I understand it.
Okay. I don't know any more than that. But I just know that I, I've worked on, on a, on a path for, for relatively long distance, and it did not require an Act 250 filing. And I don't, I, I don't remember the, the conditions, so I'm sure that they've looked into it, and it's something that's required.
Yeah.
Hey, Sherman, I, I think it's because the parcel already has an Act 250 permit associated with it, so that's, so then certain activities get triggered, you need to apply it for the amendment. But if the parcel didn't already have an Act 250 permit, it may not have been needed. That's my understanding.
Thank you.
Okay. So next on the agenda is the revisions that have been done by Watershed Consulting to our Stormwater Ordinants Online Map or Web Map. So they, they took the suggestions that we had or questions that we had. That's that Stormwater Map User Feedback document that we sent out, and then they also did a user guide or tutorial. That's another document that they've done. And the folks had a chance to try out the new map. The, the link to it is in the web map tutorial. It's right there. The link is right at the top, right under the title, Rutland Town Stormwater Ordinance Web Map, and that link will take you right to the map as it is now. So I played around a little bit, not sure if other people have had time to do that. I guess my request at this point is that we approve a payment to them. They've worked on this off and on for quite some time for us, for, for over a year. And also talked to Dana. Since he put together the user feedback, he'd like a discussion on that, and maybe we'll have some things to send back to them. But that, he could not make tonight's meeting, and I think he's on vacation the next meeting. So this might be two meetings out, that we just come back and just take a, one last look at this before we like put it on the webpage. But what I'm asking for this evening is whether I can get permission to approve the payment.
And how much is the payment?
It should be $1,500. The original amount.
I will, will move that we agree to make the payment and give you permission to sign whatever is required to do that.
Second.
Okay, Andy, second, thank you. Any discussion? It seems to work pretty well right now, the map.
Well, it's my understanding from, I think everybody should know from our conversation with you, is that if we find things wrong, they will, that need tweaking, they will take care of it.
Yeah, they've been, they've been really good about that.
Yeah. And I would just like to mention that I worked on this with Dana. And Dana did an incredible job. He's much more techie than I am. And between the two of us, we really went through it extensively, and it, from reading their remarks, it looks like they addressed everything and then some. So if it still needs work, so be it, but they did a very good job, and we should pay them.
Okay. Okay. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Great. On to Old Business. Let's see, Conservation Commission, Mary Beth. We're, we're still looking at what towns around the state and in the region are doing. And so we'll need, we'll need another meeting to compile that, correct? So.
Unless, so, was there some, a, a deadline that we had where we couldn't wait till the next meeting? Was there? Am I remembering correctly?
Well, you're probably remembering that the select board gave us until sometime in July.
Okay.
Get back to them. I could probably get another extension.
Okay, I think we'll be ready, well, I'll, I think I'll have enough at least to be ready to, um, to share with the planning commission, because I've been talking to people. I have another meeting planned with the Wallingford Conservation Commission member on Sunday. So I do have a little bit of work left to do, but I'll definitely, at the next meeting, have plenty to share.
Okay, and I've got some, some information from Tinmouth, Middletown Springs, and I'm getting some information from Shrewsbury. The person's on vacation right now. So I think that covers everyone in our area.
And like, I, I sent you the, just a quick summary of my conversation with the Bradford Conservation Commission. So we had decided to focus on Rutland County, but the, the person from the state recommended we talk to Bradford because they've done a lot with trails. So I talked to a woman who's been a member of the commission since 1994, and they've done a lot of trail work in that time. So I think once I have more feedback from Wallingford, which also does a lot with recreation, they have, I think it's elephant ponds that they manage and trails, and they're pretty involved with recreation, too. So I think once I talk to her, I'll have a, and combine with what you've been finding out, that we'll have plenty of information.
Yeah, it seems to be in this, in this area, that is the, the primary focus of conservation commissions, is recreation and building, maintaining trails, things like that.
Um, I think, um, I don't know, now is the time to propose, or if we just put it on the agenda? But I did notice in the select board minutes that they asked if we had taken a vote as a planning commission. Um, so I think if we could put it on the agenda to vote on whether we, as a whole, support having the Conservation Commission or not, I think that would be a good item to have on the agenda, in addition to the discussion and filling everyone in. And maybe, um, for that, it would be good to have something written for people to review maybe in the next week or two, just so people have the information and can think about it, and then we can discuss it further at the next meeting. Does that, would that work for everybody?
I, I like that idea, because the, the only concern I have is that it appears that the, the commission could really expand and take on a lot of responsibility. And my concern is that we say we want to do it, and then from outside or from somewhere else, we get really more than we can handle. We had something written that put, just put a definition around what we will do, what we plan to do. I would feel more comfortable with it.
Yeah, and I think that's what the select board is looking for, too, what we think this group should do specifically. And hopefully, it wouldn't be too much.
Right.
Are they receptive to a separate commission?
A separate commission from?
Conservation Commission? Separate from the planning commission?
I, I think they are open to hearing what our ideas are for that. They would, they essentially want a recommendation from us, if, if we're ready to give them one, if we come to consensus on that.
So along those lines, would we? Can we at least entertain and maybe discuss later the potential for having someone who some volunteer who wants to be part of the commission, whether or not we want to do that, I don't know, because doing that opens up another issue that may turn up, but it it maybe it wouldn't be limited to the planning commission, but the planning commission and any volunteers.
So that is that that does relate to something Nancy Jones, who's the chair of the Bradford Conservation Commission was saying um, that it would be good to have a few, you know, a couple of people that see it through and are some of the founding members, actually, the um, the woman, the town planner from Middlebury that I talked to also recommended that um, so I mean Barbara and I have been working on it. Um, but that is a lot to ask of people to do both the planning commission and the conservation commission. Um, so I um, I I haven't really been talking to many people about it, but I do have a friend who um lives in Rutland Town who expressed interest in being on a conservation commission. She is an attorney, so she um wasn't hasn't been um you know, open to being on the planning commission for conflict of interest possibilities, but um, she did say that she'd be comfortable being on the conservation commission. And I think there may be other people out there that might be interested. Um, one suggestion the that Nancy had was to have a kind of a informal event um, like a trail, you know, a walk on existing trails. Um, so I was thinking of maybe later in the summer, not in the next few weeks, but a little later in the summer, having uh, maybe a trail walk at Northwood Park. Um, like a nature walk and the people that, you know, are interested in that type of thing. Um, talking to them about potentially be being involved, but it's kind of a chicken and egg sort of thing because you don't want to go two steps ahead trying to recruit people if you don't know if you're going to do it or not. But it is something I'm thinking of, like, is there even the interest to have? Um, I think she was saying they have nine people on their board. Um, she said, you know, for Bradford, um. Well, I guess, would you would you guys like me to just give you a summary of the conversation that I had with her? Because I found it very helpful in picturing what it might look like for us?
Is that? I think I think we should wait and compile all our information together.
Okay.
There's so much unknown here.
Yeah, to this group and and put put some of these ideas down. And, you know, you know, one of them, one part of this might be to get other people in town involved in something. Like the Conservation Commission gets gets some others. So yeah, let's let's talk. Let's talk offline about that, Mary Beth, how
Okay.
best to put that information where you were gathering mostly and present it to this group.
Okay.
And see what we see what people think.
I sure and we'll try to do it in the next week or two, just so that people have time to read through information before we're asking people to make decisions on whether to do it or not. Okay.
So, yeah, and so we have been for the last few months been juggling a couple of new couple of new groups, possibilities for new groups. So the energy, an energy group is the other thing that's in the mix. And Norm, you wanted to talk, you had you wanted to do some updates on on that.
Have you ever talked?
I think so.
Okay. Um, thank you, Barbara. Just a few things. I think I'll start uh, just touch on the fact that it appears that progress on the Energy Commission, the Energy Committee and going to the Select Board. There's some wisdom in holding off a bit. And basically, uh, that arises from the fact that Barbara informed me that uh, there will be some significant uh, state funding available to planning commissions. Is that correct, Barbara?
To regional planning.
Regional planning commissions. In connection with energy committees. And I'll let Barbara take it from there when I finish. And I think given that part of this freight train should slow down a little bit until we know that piece of the puzzle. Uh, having said that, I have a few other comments to make. I've I've always heard back from Barbara and from Jim Hall on suggestions how to improve or edit uh, my draft of a letter to the Select Board. And I would appreciate it if everyone would still give that some thought. If you need me to send it out to you again, I'll do it. Um, and see what else we can sort of tee up uh, pending the financial piece that Barbara's going to talk about. With the delay, I spoke to Barbara about this and you may remember that some time ago, Sherman and I attended uh, and a presentation by members of the Charlotte Energy Committee, which had been in existence for a while.
Decades.
And um, it was frankly, I don't remember much about it, but I knew my recollection is it was pretty comprehensive what they were doing. And I thought it might be a good idea now that we have a little breathing room here, sort of imposed on us, to have someone uh, from an energy committee, preferably in Rutland County, uh, to come and talk to us about what they're doing on their energy committing or what person did uh, when they were part of it. Uh, to give us more of an idea that is just not a dream, but some sort of boots on the ground information and knowledge uh, to go to the Select Board with when and if we do it. Um, and uh, you know, I would I would be thinking of maybe at most a half an hour at some meeting. Uh, but you know, that's just my thought. To give us, you know, a little more feel for these ideas that have been floating around and I've been floating around for some time. And the fellow that came to mind for Barbara and I was a fellow from Brandon named Michael Shank. Who served on their energy committee and you may have read in the paper. Uh, he resigned having served what he thought was sufficient time. So that's just my suggestion at this point. I think if Barbara all of this will be clearer when Barbara fills in the financial.
Well, yeah, that's um, we don't have a whole lot of information from the state yet. There's something the legislature passed this session is to get more funding um, to the regional planning commission so they can work with local energy committees more. And so it's pretty substantial funding. You know, there's twenty seven communities in in the Rutland region. Not all of them have energy committees. I mean, it's more like, you know, half a dozen have energy committees. But that work will need to be shared among the towns that do want assistance. And um, it will mean, you know, more access to to or access to new data coming from the state on energy usage or some of that modeling that we put into our town plan. Uh, and it could also mean just going through the strategies, those actions at the end of the plan and figuring out uh, which ones can are are most doable. And also lending some assistance, like if it's a workshop on e-vehicles or something, electric vehicles. The Regional Planning Commission would be able to help out uh, with with that planning, organizing and things like that. So we're we're still getting the details in. And but it it is going to be a sizable amount of money. And it might be a good argument to the Select Board that uh, perhaps Rutland Town could be doing, could try a little bit more at this point. Since there is that opportunity.
With and you may not know this, and I didn't ask you when we spoke, but it occurred to me as you were speaking uh, that does this sort of anticipate a a new employee who would concentrate on these things at the Regional Planning Commission level?
It could be. It could be. The the funding is such that it could.
Well, when you said substantial about three times, I, you know, you're just the light went off in my head. That would be wonderful, I mean, throughout the county.
Yeah, yeah, that's a possibility. And, you know, it's it's also to help address some of the things coming down the pike. Uh, there will be a new statewide comprehensive energy plan by the end of the year. And then there's the Global Warming Solutions Act that was passed um, two years ago by the legislature. And so there's a climate action plan coming out of that group um, that they're been they've been working on since early this year and and that's due early next year. So it's very possible there is going to be a new stuff proposed by the state that um that they think, you know, citizens around the state should be doing. Whether it's doing more conservation, doing more weatherization or or cutting greenhouse gases. Uh, we're probably going to hear a whole lot more about that. And that's something that that can also be worked into. You know, the this work between the energy committees and and the regional planning commission.
It it just seems to me as as much time as I've put into this that it makes sense to wait and see what the real task is and how it can be funded and present a complete picture to the Select Board. So I I have no but I would still like the input so we know where everybody on the plant, when our planning commission stands and everybody's had a chance to articulate. And I'll try and assemble all that. Um, and that piece will be done and we don't have to start all over three, four months down the line.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, and the the reason why details are still sketchy at this point is that the a contract is being drafted, being pulled together between the state um, and and the regional planning commissions, you know, as we speak. So that's why some things are not really clear cut yet.
Thank you. I'm done.
Any, oh, yes, you have. I see a hand up there, Mary Beth.
Um, one, so I know that in our summary or the summary that you put together, Barbara, for the Conservation Commissions, you mentioned that some also have an energy committee component. And the um, the lady that I talked to, the chair of the Bradford Conservation Commission, um, they they have an energy subcommittee as part of their Conservation Commission. So just something to think about if we didn't want to propose two new groups for town, you know, for the town. Um, I don't know how the timing would work for the new funding, but if we could have the plan be to roll them together, so it'd be you know, the same group of people, but as a subcommittee or um, you know, connected in some way, that is one suggestion.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Or something to think about. Something to consider. Okay. Any other questions on a Conservation Commission and or an energy committee? Okay, we'll move on. I um, so I think we're done with oh, we're not quite done with old business. Um, I don't have anything new. We obviously, we don't have a speaker from the airport on our helipad and airstrip ordinance. Um, I contacted the the manager down there, Chris Beitzel. And he, since he works for V-Trans, he had to run it by V-Trans and and they're not interested in him uh, making suggestions to us. So he actually deferred me to the FAA. So that might take a little while before I come back up from, you know, that deep dive. Um, and in the meantime, I Dana has reached out to a commercial pilot that he knows. And that person may have some ideas for us. Or at least is willing to look at what we have and let us know whether, you know, it's whether we're on the right track.
I have a a question that may be a comment, I'm not sure. One one day last week, I was somewhere and I can't remember where and I saw a plane landing on a lake. And I it immediately came to mind that we're working on an ordinance that addressed some of things like that. And I don't I I don't remember anything in our ordinance that says that we water is or is not included.
Mm hmm.
Uh, I I think we should be explicit somehow to say it either is included or it's not included or whatever, but we just should address it.
Mm hmm.
Oh, Andy has his hand up.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, I had a discussion recently with a friend of mine who's a professional pilot and we went over and he flies uh, flown all over the world. He flies his own Cessna right now. And so we went over the size of an airstrip. What we came up with was to put in there not small amount of acreage, that really need about eleven acres for a private airstrip.
Right now, we have like two and a half, right?
Right.
Wow.
The way we arrived at that was a strip roughly two hundred and fifty feet wide. You need a fifty foot strip. And you want uh, two hundred foot buffers on each side and two thousand feet long. And he feels that that's a a pretty reasonable strip for a small of for a light plane. And the second thing we came up with is that we want to break up, break apart helipads from airstrips because the helipad should be looked at at a totally different, a totally different way. And of course, that you would want to lay out in a circle, basically. And what he comes up with is um an absolute minimum of a of a hundred and fifty foot radius from the center point. And really two hundred feet being far more reasonable. Uh, and so therefore we could, we could definitely um, set the set the two things apart and have the two separate um, the two separate square footages in there for um, for the helipad, one for the helipad and one for an airstrip.
Awesome.
Good. That's a start.
There might be some things we could combine with the ordinance. Um, but definitely the the dimensions of the landing areas would be separate.
Mm hmm. Definitely that the the two areas, you know, because they have to be looked at completely differently.
Okay. Okay, great, great. Thank you for that, Andy. Um, and I I guess by next meeting, we'll probably have some additional information from Dana's pilot. So we'll just keep compiling this and seeing and see how it can all fit together.
These are both professional pilots, correct? Oh, Andy's fellow and
Well, this, oh, oh, those
Dana's and
Dana was, he's he called him a commercial pilot.
Is your fellow a commercial pilot as well?
He's a retired commercial pilot and he he's a private pilot now. And he's, as I said, he's flown all over the world as a for he was a pilot for a large corporation right here in the Rutland area.
I'm sorry?
He was the pilot for a large corporation right here in the Rutland area that has holdings all over the world.
Well, I find it interesting that the the airport down here has concerns with with some of this stuff. But when you when you ask him for some assistance or some help, V-Trans says, no, don't go there, you know, I mean, it's just
Yeah, I I I guess it's it's a hands off thing with a local issue or local ordinance. Yeah, I, I guess it's, it's a hands-off thing with a local issue or local ordinance. Is probably what, what the
What they've come up with is good here. What Andy's done is, is a good start. It's the best way to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I have a contact, I don't know whether it would be redundant or not. Who is a flight instructor, private, private flight instructor and a private pilot. If you think it's makes sense to get some input from him, I could talk to you about that.
Okay, okay. And do you, do you know how to get in touch with Alan Peterman?
Yes.
Because he flies. He's a pilot. A hobbyist.
Let me, um I'll talk to you about that.
Okay. Okay. Anything else on this one? We have this huge, huge screen up on the wall now. But most of you folks are so itty-bitty tiny. I can barely see you. I guess I should be looking at my laptop, but
You're not so large on our screen either.
I mean, this, this, this TV, what, geez, what is it? It's like, almost like five feet from corner to corner. It's, it's huge. But it's a lot of black space. Maybe it's, you know, user error on my end setting this up, but Okay, thank you, everybody, for those contributions. Moving down to announcements and news, the select board is, wanted us to know and was hoping for some participation from the planning commission for its upcoming, it's calling them listening tours. It has two, two meetings for the public to, to talk about, start talking about what to do with the ARPA, the ARPA, the American Recovery Act of funds that are coming to the town. So what we know is that there will be at least $400,000 in the first round. And there will be three rounds, I believe, and we're thinking that it's going to be the 400,000 times three eventually. But the initial discussion will be about that first 400,000. And so I'll send everybody a link to what Bill put up on the town website about these meetings. The first one is next week, next Tuesday, June 29th. And that's at 6:00 PM. This room will be open, and then there'll be a Zoom link, and that's what I'll send you, folks. And then the second listening tour event is in July, July 20th. And that one's a little bit earlier in the evening, that's at 5:00. Same thing, both town hall and Zoom. So you know, definitely anything that's related to water, sewer, or broadband is eligible. And anything related to public health is eligible. But there probably is some room for some other types of projects in there. And the town can include households, small businesses, and nonprofits in spreading some of this wealth around.
Would that include energy projects, like rooftop solar for permanent residences?
I don't think that would make the list.
Or even heat pumps or stuff like that?
I don't think so. I don't think for
COVID-related?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
It's COVID-related, but
Yeah, with the exception of the water and sewer and broadband. Yes, I think it would have to, have to prove that it's recovering, it's, it's a project to recover from COVID. Or maybe a public health thing to prevent, you know, or, or help with the pandemic down the line. Anybody else have any comments?
I, I just had a question. Would it include something like assistance for renters who have fallen behind on their rent?
I don't know if that would come from the town funds. It might, it might. I'll also send a link to the VLCT. They're, they're kind of shepherding these local funds. And what's eligible, eligible and what's not. So their website's pretty robust on, on this, so I'll send that link as well. But there might be a separate pot of money for that, Sherman. I'm just not certain.
This comes in three installments, did you say?
That's, that's my understanding. That there's enough money to do three installments for, for every town in the state of Vermont. Did someone else want to say something? Yeah, Andy?
Yeah, if we're done with that, I'd just like permission to speak for maybe two minutes here. Just a number, just a couple of things I'd like to bring up. And one is that we've had some recent events here in the state of Vermont, specifically one that's personally impacted my property negatively. And another, when the recent doings in West Pollock. You've probably all read about that in the Herald. The, the fellow that has the shooting range and whatever. At any rate, that's kind of got me thinking. And takes me back to when I first got on the board. And at that time, we did a, a survey in town, and Tom Turner did it. I would say this may be 12 years ago, but Howard and Jerry could, uncertainly, both remember it. And at the time it came through that the town was polled whether they wanted zoning or not. And it came out that approximately 77% of the people who responded wanted zoning in some, in some form. And so I think now that we've, we're working on energy committees and stormwater committees and conservation committees. We've really got to look to what our core function is. And our real core function is to protect Rutland Town. And to make Rutland Town and have the growth in Rutland Town happen properly. And I think the biggest thing that we are lacking right now is zoning. So I would like to ask that we put it on the agenda next week. That we vote on pulling out our old zoning document from 12 years ago. Asking the select board if they would like to support us on it and update it and put it together. And get it back to the Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
Okay, yeah. So next meeting, you, you're kind of, you're suggesting that we take a look at what that zoning proposal was 12 years ago?
Yes, take a look at it. And also, I, I would like to make a motion next, and next meeting that we petition the selectmen that we have permission to work on a zoning document and submit it to them. It's my understanding, right, that we really shouldn't take on anything that the select board doesn't authorize us to do. And so therefore, I think that's why we'd need a motion, and I really want to have everyone give it, you know, three weeks' thought before they step into it, and we'll go from there.
Okay, so you want, you want us to take a look at what, what the zoning proposal was 12 years ago as homework for the next meeting, so we could take the vote at that next, is that what you're suggesting?
Yes, you could, but no, what I really, what I really want everyone to do is just think about whether we want to petition the select board to ask them if we can pull that document out and really work on it. If, if obviously, if their feeling is, is that they don't want to touch zoning, then, then they will just tell us not to bother doing it. And but hopefully that they will say to us, yes, let's, let's move along on this. I just frankly feel that it's, it's not just due, it's past due.
Okay. I'm sorry to hear about your experiences, Andy. Just to clarify this, before we go to the select board, we'll wait until our next meeting. To discuss this one more time, okay?
Right, and vote on it.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion at the next meeting. I'll have something written up so that everyone can see it.
Okay, okay. Mary Beth?
Um, I just want to share, in general, I think that's a good idea, Andy. And I actually, just when looking for the subdivision regulations, pulled up a draft that was online of the zoning regulations, which I didn't even know that was put together, and I wasn't aware that there was a survey like that. So I think that's interesting. But I think it's a good idea to look at and discuss.
Yeah, maybe one of the questions for us is whether we do a more recent survey? I don't know. Do another one?
I think that survey that was done, I can't really remember, but it was done at town meeting, wasn't it? Jerry or Howard, do you remember?
It was.
Recall, but you're probably right.
It was something that was handed out at the town meeting?
It was something valid, I believe.
Oh.
What's that, Howard?
The, the question was, something along the lines of, would you be in favor of the town adopting zoning regulations? Yes or no?
No, it had four steps to it. It had, I believe it had limited zoning, moderate, and it, it broke it into three categories. And, and obviously, the fourth category was no zoning at all. And as I remember, it was 77%, but it could, it certainly was over 70. The respondents either responded to either one of the three categories of zoning. And barely 20% of the people came back with wanting no zoning.
I, I think what happened was, Andy, if I remember right, when it, when it went to a vote, I think that people we just couldn't satisfy everybody with how we drew it up, if I remember right. And, and it just got a lot of, a lot of blow, but you know, the people who showed up were the people who didn't want it. A lot of people who were for it never showed up and spoke with us. It was an interesting process.
And this was at the town meeting, Jerry?
Well, no, this was at our meeting, Barbara. We, we had, like, you know, public hearings about what should be in the zoning. Does that sound correct, Howard, if I remember right?
Yes, I think it was.
And we, a lot of people showed up, but almost everybody that showed up was negative. And it was very difficult then to put something together that wasn't, I think it was broken into restrictive. You know, not restrictive, and, and the people who showed up either wanted none or very little. And it was, it was hard to find common ground. So, and when it was voted on, it was voted down, if I remember right. But I, I can't agree more. The very reason that I even started on the planning commission was an issue that I had with a neighbor who built a garage right one foot from my property line. And, and I just thought, geez, this is time to maybe think about that. Why does the town have any zoning? So that's why I got on here, and it was it was a struggle to see people really shoot it down and not open up their minds a little bit. But I saw a lot of their points too. You know, there was a lot of valid points about having it or not having it.
Yeah. I think if we pursue this with the select board, some good examples around town of where it would be helpful to have it might, might add to our cause.
Well, the, the one acre rule is a huge isn't it? Am I right? If we had zoning, we would be able to circumvent Act 250 for for, you know, for an acre rather than 10.
Right, right. It goes from one acre to 10 acres. So, yeah, only 10-acre projects would be considered, you know, act 2, for act 250. Right now, just about everything is. Okay, all right. That sounds like fun. Maybe not a summer project, but good fall project. But yeah, thank you for bringing that up, Andy.
Thank you.
And we'll, we'll get it on the agenda next, next meeting. And Mary Beth, you, you found the draft zoning regs on our website?
Yeah, I just searched when we were discussing with the first, the member from the public about the subdivision regulations and whether it was a boundary line or, or not. I was just searching, doing an internet search and found the draft zoning regulations, which I didn't know that we had, so. But if you could share them with the group, that would be great. I'm sure you have, like, an official copy.
Barbara?
Yeah.
I would just be careful to determine from people who were involved in it whether what's there is the most recent one.
Yeah.
Send out.
Yeah. And, yeah.
It was before I was on.
And before Bill took over too, so we'll, we'll figure it out.
I know it caused, I remember it just caused a lot of debate in town. I mean, it was sometimes angry. So we've got to be careful.
Yeah.
Isn't, isn't that though, Norm, isn't that the road to progress? You know, isn't that the road to progress? You got to debate it. If you, if just because people got upset, we got to move forward.
And 12 years seems like a, a good time span to try again, if that's the route we go.
There have been a lot of changes in the last 12 years.
There have been.
itself, and, and, and the, you know, just the, the, the the governing body of the, you know, the, the whole thing, the administration and all of the, you know, things that are done for the town and just sounds like it's time to, to at least think about it again and revisit it.
Okay.
Agreed.
All right, that's what we'll do. Anything else, news-wise, announcement-wise, from anyone? Okay, seeing no yellow hands or nodding heads or anything. We can move, we can go down to the minutes of June 3rd. June 4th, yes. Was it? It was June 3rd? So maybe we changed the date on the minutes, right?
Yeah, okay, this is 4th, yep.
Any, anything else we need to change here?
Um, I just had a couple tweaks, if I may. I wasn't here, so I'm not sure of all the background to this, but it did seem to me on page 2, paragraph 2E. I'm sorry, 2B. It says, make, making recommendations to municipalities to receipt of lands gifts or for receipt of land gifts. I don't know whether this was copied or whether this was just notes taken by Bill.
Yeah, usually when these things happen, it's how someone phrased it when they were talking. But yes, grammatically, it probably should be for.
And then on old business 1D. Some input from outside sources is needed for a variety of topics. And people with experience will be reached out to. Contacted, approached.
Again, that's probably how it was said.
Well, I didn't know whether this was, what It attributes it to you, you wouldn't talk that way. Okay, as I said, I wasn't there and I, I don't know.
I think that one's okay to leave.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Anyone want to move to accept the, the minutes as with a couple of, two changes, the date, and then for 2B?
Move.
Thank you, Howard. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Andy? Anyone else have anything to say? If you're ready for the question, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye and opposed?
I am abstaining because I wasn't, I didn't attend the meeting.
Okay. Okay. So I don't think, if there's nothing else for the group tonight, thank you. Very productive meeting.
We made it through it.
We made it through it technically, I think. I think we're recording and everything. So, yeah, we did start at 6:35 PM tonight. And if there's a motion to adjourn.
I will move that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, thank you. So we are adjourning at 7:45.